Give them the benefit of the doubt and don't condemn them before the truth is out. Thank you.
Mr. Benes?
And I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues on the dais. I think that this is an opportunity to highlight that our department is in good standing, deserves the respect and admiration of our citizenry. And also, in terms of how one or two individuals may have acted, I think that if we can, if I may, Madam Mayor, suggest that our parameters for this investigation include, in terms of a timeline, any communication that took place just before contacting city staff at that stop. Because I think that we need to really, really establish a timeline that shows from the moment that that individual was stopped and any communication that took place, whether it's via the radio or via the cellphone, and then see where it leads. Again, our officers have done a phenomenal job. We've been highlighted nationally, and that's not because we're wearing the uniform, it's because they're wearing the uniform. And so, that's what I would like to see, as far as the parameters for this investigation. Because I want to be able to, I think, for the city's sake, exactly see what happened within that window of time, from the very beginning that the stop was made to the very end, and all communication that took place. Because I just want to make sure that we have it out there for the public to see.
Can you clarify the end? Sorry, Mayor.
Well, whatever the end is, because there's going to have to be a finality to the investigation. So then, if no wrongdoing has occurred, and you're right, even if it's an internal investigation, we're not going to satisfy everybody. I get that. It's going to happen. We've been around too long not to know that.
Yes.
But if something was done within the purview of the responsibilities of a police officer, then it is what it is. But again, I'd rather have an investigation bear that out. Whatever was done, we'll follow it to the end.
Mr. Duran?
I think also you need to add on to the leaking of the videos and all of the reports, because there was no open records request done for those. They were illegally let out, because if you don't have that, then it was stolen. And I think you need to add that on to the parameters, as far as... Yeah, how this information got out, who's responsible for it. So we need to add that on to the parameters, too.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I agree. I agree. I think that it should be where policy was broken, where it was... And to take a look at the policies. Because if we find that there was some broken policies or procedures, we need to know where they're at so that we can fix them, fix policies and the procedures at the same time. Try to figure out, you know, that we also have to see if there was any abuse of authority, of power. That's one of the things that I want to focus on as well. Because I don't want... With the accusations, it's very difficult for Ms. Rodarte if we do decide to just, you know, get in the battle wagon with all the lynch mob and let her go, and not clearing her name. If she did something wrong, believe me, I'd be the first one to put something on the agenda item to take care of this. But we need to prove, because these allegations are nothing but negative intentions. We need to find out why. We need to find out how protocol was broken. We need to see what the extent of it is. Because, you know, we have a right to know. Did she abuse her authority? You know, that's the biggest question I want to be answered. Did she use her authority? You know? And also, we need to find out the other stuff, the secondary stuff, which is where the protocol was broken.
Ms. Villalobos? So, if I may make a motion to initiate, to direct staff, appropriate staff,
to begin an internal investigation of the police department, I hate to do this, of the police department, with the parameters to include the timeline from the very beginning of when the incident occurred, all communication that took place prior to city staff being called, when you were called. And then also to include analysis of policies and procedures, established policies and procedures, and if anything was... If there was any contravention of those policies and procedures. And then also to include any potential abuse of power at any level of personnel.
Second.
I just want to add something. Ms. Rodarte, I just want to let you know that I have nothing against you. I think you've done a phenomenal job. Everything any of us has ever gave you a task, you've always completed. But I just don't want you to think that just because we're asking if you used your, abused your authority, I just don't want you to think that, you know, I got something against you. I just want to make sure that the integrity of your office, the integrity of our police department, and ours, including ours as well, because we owe it to our constituents. And I just hope that you continue to do your good job. Meanwhile, this investigation is ongoing.
Mr. Rodarte? And as you recall, last time, I requested an investigation, because I know I did not do anything wrong.
Okay. I just want to throw it out there.
Mayor, we have speakers. Daniel Hernandez?
Hello, good afternoon. Mr. Duran, it's my opinion, of course, and it was your opinion saying, "Show me where the policeman is stealing money, taking money." Well, if the policeman did not give a DWI speeding ticket, isn't that taking money from the city? If something was broken, and that's revenue for the city, tickets being issued. So, my point of view, tickets are revenue for the city. If he did not give them, then he's taking money from us. Thank you. Just think about that.
House of Lords Speaker. I would just like to put it for the record that Texas police officers, Texaswide, is not required or obligated to give any tickets whatsoever. It is the total discretion of the officers itself. Mr. Cox, prior law enforcement officer, is agreeing with me on that. So with that being said, I will defend my department until the end. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sergio Jaime?
Well, si vamos a hacer una investigación, verdad que como han mencionado la mayor que ese... Decía, es interna y no externa. Nosotros como ciudadanos necesitamos que sean las externas con... Así como han gastado dinero en otras cosas. Preferimos que sean los sheriffes quienes lleven esa investigación a fondo. Porque si no volvemos a lo mismo, se está cubriendo toda la corrupción. Y eso no vamos a permitir, ya más ni pueden permitir ustedes, señores. Para eso están aquí, para evitar toda esa clase de corrupción. Yo no digo que pueden ser malos, pero elementos... Pero a ellos, los sheriffes, no los van a amenazar. Y si los amenazan, ellos tienen un sindicato para que los despiendan. Y aquí no tienen sindicato para... La ciudadanía los amenaza. ¿Y quién los va a defender? ¿Ustedes? No, señores, tomen las cosas como son. Pónganle más atención a los temas, a las cosas, por favor. Thank you.
No se preocupen, señor Jaime. Nada más le quiero asegurar que la investigación va a ser interna y los resultados se van a pasar a una agencia externa para que los revise. Pero para seguir el procedimiento, los sheriffs no pueden tomar una investigación sin antes tener la investigación interna con pruebas de que hubo algún delito criminal.
Sí, la cosa es que como ustedes lo anunciaron a televisión, por eso le estoy diciendo eso.
Ms. Villalobos?
I think you took my words. Mr. Jaime? Bueno, para todos, otra vez. No, aquí se acaba de aclarar que si queríamos que hiciera una investigación con los sheriffs. Desgraciadamente, tenemos que tomar otros pasos. No podemos llegar allí. No nos van a hacer la investigación. Tiene que ser entero. Esas son las reglas, correcto? Y eso es lo que... Yo sé que lo dijimos en inglés, y a lo mejor no lo entendieron en español, pero sí estamos siguiendo las reglas de esta investigación. Thank you.
Lorenzo Freire?
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Mr. Duran?
Just to clarify, not giving a ticket is not stealing from the city. Several years ago, I was pulled over for a defective taillight. The officer told me to get it fixed. He didn't give me a ticket. That's not stealing from the city. Stealing from the city is police officer breaking into somebody's house and taking their money. That's stealing. Like he said, it is up to the officer to cite or not cite anybody. And that is not stealing from the city. You're taking it out of context. These guys make the decisions every day, whether to cite or not cite. And I really have to... They could go crazy with tickets. That's not taking money out of the city. That is just using their discretion. And I think it builds more goodwill for the city, for them to pull somebody over, and as long as it's not a very grave violation, like having your kid not in their car seat, or speeding, if it's a busted taillight. It does more for our city to have that officer say, "Get it fixed." Now, if he sees you two or three times, you know he's going to get you. Because these guys see the same people, because it's the same, all of us, and the same... They know us. They know, "I pulled that car over last week. His taillight was busted. It's fixed now, so we'll leave him alone." But that is what builds our police department, is goodwill. We've had these officers take food to people who needed it out of their own pocket. How come we don't hear that in the press? Why isn't the press taking care of that? But no, one guy, one little problem here, and the press is all over it. We've had that on two occasions. Two of our officers, I think it was four of officers, went out and bought food out of their own pockets to give to needy people in our town. And these are the people you're bashing? How come the press doesn't bring that out? We never see that in the press. But they're tried, convicted, in the press, without them being able to say anything. And they will be able to say something when we find out that nothing wrong was done. And if something was wrong, was done, then it is up to the police department to handle it. Not us, I'm counsel, because that's not what we're here for. It's not the press, and it's not a few disgruntled constituents. That is for the police department to handle. And I'm sure they will do as good a job policing their own as they do our city.
Mr. Benes?
I just want to add that, to what Mr. Duran said, that I would rather have a police department that is compassionate and understands our community, rather than to hand out infractions just for the sake of handing out infractions. And I think that they have shown a great level of compassion, because along with the administration or the discharge of the laws that we need to observe, they have done a very good job in supporting the community, to your point. And so I think that we have taught, and I mentioned it earlier in the meeting, we have, we've said the phrase, "No one is perfect." We said the phrase, "We all make mistakes." And so, we are human, and that's a consequence of being human. And I think that the police officers have always treated the constituency of Socorro with dignity that they deserve. And I think that it's our turn to provide the same courtesy to them. And unfortunately, we have to get to this point of having this investigation. Because we need to, to Mr. Rodriguez's point, prove that we have a solid organization. And I think that I would ask the police department, don't look at this as a negative, but look at it as an opportunity to highlight and to shine, and show that what we've got is worth admiration of other agencies.
Mr. Rodriguez?
This is the last thing I'm going to say, really the last thing. The month of February, I want people to understand that our police department made 780 stops, okay? For anything, for lack of insurance, or for a busted light, or for speeding, or for drinking, or for anything. I need you to understand this number, 780 traffic stops. We are focusing on letting go of somebody. Let me tell you how good of a hearted police department we have. You know how many verbal warnings out of those 780 were done? 389. That is 49.8% of the time. That means you have a 50-50 chance that our police department has a good heart, that understands, and they have compassion for our residents. Who they understand, "Hey, I speeded. I'm sorry, I was doing this," or "I was..." You know what? Let it be the last time. Hey, they understand, and they understand what compassion is when one of our residents has a busted light and doesn't have that kind of money to fix it right away, get it fixed. Those are good officers. I just hate, just like the rest of us, that we talk about, "Oh my God, you let go, and you put all these people in TV saying and talking bad about our officers." I need you to get that number out, people. 780 stops? 389 were verbal warnings. I would like to see the sheriff's department's numbers, let me tell you. Because when my officer is going there and letting somebody go, because they understand, because they're compassionate, I've seen on Horizon Boulevard, and that is my biggest beef, they're being pulled over, four sheriffs pulling over our constituency. And I don't see them giving compassion. They're giving them tickets. I see the DPS department on Socorro, North Loop, in Alameda. And I don't see them with compassion. They pull you over and they cite you. I want to see their numbers compared to my officers. They're good people. Let's put the trust in them. Numbers don't lie. Look it up. February, open records, 780 traffic stops, 389 were verbal warnings. That should say the dedication and level of our police officers. I'm just sad that we have to always say that they're corrupt. They have a good heart. I'm pretty sure Mr. Sergio Cox let go of some few people because he understands. Do you know? I just want to say that, that, you know what, we should trust in our police department.
May I ask for the rule, a rule suspension of ways that I have to speak to my members?
Motion to approve suspension of rules.
Second.
For three minutes.
Second.
And you had voted first, or?
Yes, sir.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Okay. Based on my experience, 26 years of law enforcement, six years on city council as a representative of the people and working for the people. I caution you, Mr. Pérez, I'm talking to you, sir. I caution you on your motion, sir, to go ahead and make the motion to direct the HR, eliminate the city manager whatsoever. No involvement from the city manager whatsoever, because the publicity has been come out. This protects her and protects her civil rights. And if you instruct, if you instruct, through the attorneys I have, HR, to do the investigation or conduct the investigation where they need to, and for them to respond to her, then that would eliminate any problems of wrongdoing or whatsoever. It's an open deal, so I caution you there, okay? As a police officer, yes, you do have the discretion. And I still, and I would caution there, that you make sure it's an investigation that is not done by its own police department. That's like putting the hen, I mean, the fox taking care of the hen house. Okay, so also to eliminate any accusations of wrongdoing there as well. The investigation to be done by somebody else independent of the police department. Whoever the HR wants to hire on this one, or whatever, how they want to do it, I recommend that you guys do that for transparency and for all the bases being covered, okay? I highly recommend that. And that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Cox, thank you. So, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to have HR, to have Human Resources handle the internal investigation, consult with city attorney, the city attorney and his staff as appropriate, and also to engage, if necessary, an outside agency. But that has to come to council for approval.
Second.
And to include the parameters that I have noted.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes. Item number 20, discussion and action to review possible violation of city of Socorro media policy. I went ahead and brought this item to council, so we can go ahead and review the media policy, and so we can all be transparent, and going on from now forward, we can all have some direction on what we need to do when dealing with the media, just to ensure that we are not divulging information that we shouldn't, and so we can all be informed of the media and any interviews that are occurring within our council. Mr. Duran?
Earlier, Mr. Rodriguez talked about unity. There's the old adage, united we fall, or united we stand, divided we fall. We're all different. We all have differences of opinion. But when it comes to the city, I think we need to have one voice. If we have something that needs to be said, we go to whoever is... The mayor is the first point of contact. We go to our mayor and tell her, "Here's what we need to be disseminated." We have earlier, everybody's running out and doing interviews. It's difference of opinions. If we want to have a united city, we all need to unite under one voice. And this media policy, it says it right there. If she cannot, if our mayor cannot be our voice, then she will designate who will. But I mean, we have, all of us have our differences of opinions. What Mr. Benes may say to the press, I may not agree with. So I think that he should go to our mayor and use our policy that's already here. We already have it. So I just think that we need to all follow the same rules. And if we do that, then a lot of misconceptions will, you know, we won't have those. Because a lot of time, like right now, we could all go out there and say something different about what's happening with the police department. We don't know. It is just going to be our opinion, but the press will take it as fact, and they'll run with it. This way, we have a press conference, we disseminate the information that needs to get out, and it'll be factual, and it'll be truthful, whereas it won't be an opinion. That's what the problem is. There's too many opinions. And then it all gets lost in the jumble. And next thing you know, everybody's going around saying they don't trust city council, they don't trust our police department. Why? Because of what they hear. And if we have one voice talking for us, then I think we can be more effective.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, the speech is nice, but you basically want us to muzzle ourselves. I think that I will not allow that. I will go down as a fight, because you want me to get this clear. You want, we're talking about differences of opinions, but yet you just want the mayor to have her own opinion, and it will not reflect my opinion. It will not reflect Mr. Pérez's opinion, or Mr. Nevaras, or Ms. Villalobos. I think that, you know, we should revamp this ordinance, change it, because I don't think that everything should go through the mayor. I don't see, you know, just the mayor of Passau coming out on TV and giving his two cents, because every council member does it. Same thing with the county. Why are you going to muzzle us? What is it that you're trying to hide? Why do you have to bring this now, when it was already in place in 2014? What are you trying to hide? What are you trying to accomplish? You know? Is it because you're irate, because you don't like, that they don't come to you? You know, there's things that you are not, and you weren't privy to. You know, some of us been here longer. I want to say that I've been, and I am, the longest current city councilman. So I am more knowledgeable than you, mayor. Okay? After that, it's Mr. Pérez. He has more knowledge than you. Ms. Villalobos has more knowledge than you. And you want to muzzle us because you just want to disseminate your own opinion? I don't think so. I think that this is antiquated. I think we need to revise it, we need to delete it, and change it. Because you know what? Why is it that you're only going to have a press conference? But you know what, Ms. Villalobos? Isn't Passmore a good enough story for you to go out there and tell the news that we're repaving it on your district? Why is it that you're going to have to not be going into the cameras and give your opinion? All I'm saying is, this, what I've been saying all along in this council is, what we're doing is that we're bringing policies that are dividing us, instead of uniting us. And I'm ashamed, mayor, I'm ashamed that you bring this. And now, when you've been sitting there for the last six months, why is it? There is a reason for it, and I will not allow it, and I am ashamed. I thought you were better than that. But all you're doing is that you're breaking us apart instead of unifying us, because of these policies. Because it doesn't read, "We're going to change." It's a possible violation. I think we need to change this. I think we need to delete it, come back and revamp it. Because I don't think, I have the floor, and I got 15 minutes. So, I think that we should just delete it, bring it back, and take a look at it and change it as needed. Because I will not be muzzled, because if there's something in your district, you need to understand. It's your district. You should have the right. When media comes up to you and asks you for something in your district, because you have an opinion, because it will always vary from mine or anybody else's. And we need to worry about this. Because what's it going to be today? What's it going to be tomorrow? Now, next council meeting, we're going to bring something about possible, you know, not talking in council now? What's next? We do this, and we go ahead and do this? What's next?
And Mr. Rodriguez, just to clarify, it does state in the statement of the issue that it's to clarify and direct on enforcing the media policy. I understand that this is antiquated. It was in place in 2014. So it's something for all of us to consider. We now have a public information officer, and I think we need to make use of that position as well. So if we need to update it, that's fine. I just wanted to bring this up to council, so we can all understand what the policy is going to be. We can, as a whole, instruct our attorney or write a new ordinance. And so that is why I brought it, so we can all have input on that. Ms. Pérez?
And I understand why this has to come about. We do need to have a consistent message. Although my preference would be, mayor, to have either, actually, the public information officer or the city manager be the front person on any, have any issue dealing with the city. Certainly because they've got the policy at hand, and then they've got the day-to-day operational knowledge. That would be me. But as far as the conduct of city council, I think that we should establish a... But as far as the conduct of city council, I think that we should establish a standards of practice relative to media. Not necessarily a policy, but just standards of practice that we observe. And so that when we are interviewed, we say that we are speaking on our own behalf or just as a city council member, a city council member for that particular district, if it's an issue relative to that particular district. And also, again, it's just, you know, a canned response, this is my opinion. Because like I told you, I spoke to K Fox today and also informed each other that we spoke to the press. I think that's also another thing that, because I understand, nobody wants to muzzle anybody. At least I don't want to say that it's to muzzle anybody, because I have particular knowledge of my district that I could share with the media and that you may not have, whatever the case be. And so I just liked for us to observe some standards of practice as it relates to the media and also be upfront when we are interviewed. When I spoke to K Fox today, it was via telephone, and it was, I told them that it's my opinion and that, and so, you know, those kinds of things, because I want to make sure that I don't put the city in a situation where there's liability. And I think that's also an overarching danger when we say something out in media, because it's already happened, or just to set an example. Our president said, you know, it was because of an interview, during an interview, that it was because of what happened to the whole Russia investigation that he got rid of the FBI director. And so, you know, and that's part of what's playing out right now in terms of the investigation. So I guess what I'm saying is that whatever we say on air or in print does have the potential of having real ramifications for the city. And so, and I understand, we are very articulate, and I think that we can express ourselves well, but I think that we need to have in place, again, a standard of practice and that we all have input on those standards. That's, so we revamp it.
Ms. Villalobos?
For the record, I didn't speak to the media, I did say that I did not want to speak to the media, okay? One, you took a lot of my ideas and put them to better words, but I believe that Mr. Perez's, I'm very tired of him. Mr. Perez's suggestion is very good, and maybe if we need to tweak it in the future, if it's not working, we can do that. Also, it's very important that sometimes we're in front of the camera because our constituents don't know us. And the cameras do help, it's not just negative stuff, sometimes they put stuff that is really good.
Plus it adds ten pounds to you. I shouldn't know.
And it's very good, and it'd be unfortunate that you only have one person all the time, and it's not fair. It's just not fair, but we do have to be very careful what we say, and I agree. Maybe we should rehearse at one point or have a dialogue of how, you know, it would be very nice to have that. And I'm glad to see everybody here trying to make the city better and work together, and thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Duran?
Well, we do have the policy in place, if we need to change it, then we need to change it. But I think we do have a person of interest. Why do we create the position if we're not going to use them? Very articulate, is not going to put the city in any type of position that we could regret, as you said earlier. That way, if we have something that needs to get out, we can call him. This is a problem we have, here's how to, and he can better do it than any of us can, to get the information out. Rather than, you know, something happened, our emotions are high, and we blurred out something that we could possibly regret we said. And this way, we have our person, we could have the, I mean, if you don't want the mayor as our first person of, first point of contact, we'll make the city manager or our person of, you know, our POI. I mean, that's why we created the position, not so all of us can speak to the press. And I would, you know, rather have one voice for our city than to have several voices that are all, we're all here for the same reason. And this policy, yeah, it was, I didn't agree with it when it first came out. I thought that it was used to muzzle some people. That's what it was put out there for, I mean, just call it what it is. It was used to muzzle council members, certain ones, who were not saying what the rest of council thought they should. So they created this policy. Well, yeah, I can see it now that we do need to have a unified voice. But yes, like Mr. Perez said, there are things that, about my district, his district, all of our districts, that only we have knowledge of. But I think we should clear it and have our spokesman do the speaking for us. If there's something that we need to get out there, give it to him, here, here's a press release, get it out there. That way we have, the city is known by one person. Or if you want, go with him. Have a joint, here's District Four representative, Ms. Villalobos, here's what we want to say. Like they had this a couple of days ago, Mr. Rodarte, Mr. Retta, and the mayor, we're all speaking together. So we had three differences, three people speaking for our city. So I think, yeah, we do need to tweak it, definitely.
I also just want to let you know, although we might be thinking this, when there's a report, they, you know,
they announced that they had a speaker speaking for them, and then at the end, what do they say? District Four was not available for comment, that sounds bad. It looks bad. So, yes, we need to relook at this item, I think it's a nice item, I think we need to learn how to speak in front of the camera, what to say, and, but we need to be also great ideas with Mr. Retta, because he, his words just flow, they're really, really good.
I just, mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, as far as press releases, you know, that should go to the mayor, I do believe that. Because Oscar had it like that too. But one of the things that I will say, and I will interject all the time, is that we should not be muzzling ourselves, period. Because even though we want one voice, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. If it's in your district and it falls in your, and it pertains to you, you should be able to talk. There is no reason why, you know, there's a Bill of Rights, and you guys don't understand that in those Bill of Rights, there is a First Amendment, okay? And we're muzzling us? I don't think so. I will continue to say what I, I will say in my opinion, because you know what? Our constituents want to know. Let me explain to you something. Mr. Perez, you're the second active current councilman, second oldest here, as in, as in time, served. I have to stress that out, you know?
You can cut me and have it.
And when have you seen one of us say something we shouldn't? Because I think that we understand what we can and can't say. You know, that's the thing, you know? And you go again? So, this is what I'm going to say, okay? I believe that there's things that should be done. I think that there's changes that should be done. I don't think we should muzzle ourselves. You know what? If the mayor wants to have a press release, that should come from her. I do agree on that, okay? What I don't agree is that when there's a bad story, I sat on that seat. I know the pressures of that seat. But you know what? We owe it to our constituency who voted us. And not hiding behind a veil of a press release, because I don't feel like talking about something bad that we just voted on. I think we should man up, or women up, or whatever you want to call it, and speak when they want an answer. Now granted, all of us already have a lot of time under our belt, we know what we can and can't say. And that is something that you guys need to understand, is that I get it, and I said it. We have to be unified in this council. But it doesn't mean that I'm going to listen to your opinion, and, because I don't believe that your opinion might be the same as mine. You know, of course, when they ask us, it's because they're asking us for a reason, okay? All I'm saying is, the press releases should go through the mayor. You were here, I think, I don't remember if you go that far, but when we were here, we had a PIO, didn't know nothing. Everybody, you were here then, right? Okay, and you know all that issue. That's why Mr. Retta, which does an excellent job, does an excellent job, but you know what we went through. You know why we don't have somebody else doing it for us.
For the record, what happened was that the PIO at that time started playing politics as well. And listening to only certain members, and putting out stories for certain members of council, so I think that's where you're.
Yes, and I don't want to go back to the old ways. That's why I'm worried. We all know, and I'm saying to all of you, I'm saying to all of you, you guys know what we can and can't say. I've never seen a news where you divulge something we said in executive. I haven't. So we know what we can and can't do, so why are we going to muzzle ourselves? That's what I'm saying. And if we're going to go back to the old ways of having somebody, then we have to be worried about what if one of us uses Mr. Retta for our own gain, for our own stories? You see, those are the things that, that's why we eliminated those, we eliminated those positions, because of that. He does a great job when we say, hey, we got to go and do a press release, because he does it, he sends it. You know? Oh, we're going to do this, we're going to have all these activities. Very good, very good. I don't, and I'm saying this, and not to discredit Mr. Retta, he does an excellent job. I just don't want him to be in a position where that happens again, you know? We have to learn from our past, because there is a saying, those who forget the past are condemned to relive it. I just don't want to go back to those old ways.
Mr. Perez?
Well, I think that, I work for a bigger organization, and so the, whatever is released, it's not muzzled, but it's very cookie cutter in the sense that it's a consistent message off the top. And we as employees, if we have that situation where we are asked for an interview or whatever, what we do is that we call the PR department, it's a PR department, and ensure that what we're saying aligns with the district that I work for. And the reason why is because we are, we are subject to the policies and procedures of that organization. And I think the same thing with us, we are subject to the policies and procedures of this organization. Now, the only difference between then and here, there and here, is that we're part of the executive, we're part of the board, so to speak. And so, yes, we are duly elected officials, and we do have responsibility for being accountable to our constituency, whether it's through the press or through print, however that may be. I, again, never will repeat this, I think that in terms of, in terms of having PIO, I think that the PIO and the city manager would work in tandem to make sure that whatever message articulated is consistent and aligned with the beliefs and policies and procedures of the city. Now, in terms of what we say to the media, I think that we as a council have to come to an agreement that we will behave a certain way, and I don't want to pretend that I know what that is, I just, you know, I think that we need to direct staff to look at other organizations and what their media policies are. And comparable, that have elected officials, so that we can go ahead and not mirror it, but certainly develop something that is, that's workable for us. And so, if I may, ma'am, mayor, for the sake of this circular conversation, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to research other media policies, PR policies, from similar organizations, similarly sized organizations, and then bring back a proposal to, for the potential adoption.
Seconds.
Mayor, we do have speakers. Sergio Cox?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the one that was muzzled. When we had a flood issue that flooded Patty Joe. There was a news deal where the residents of Patty Joe called for the media, and myself and Mr. Norfleet, the city manager, this is in District One, I'm District One representative. We were called for a news release by the Patty Joe people. By the way, we had to settle that lawsuit because of some bad decision-making on part of some people we had in office then. Nonetheless, I went, myself and Mr. Norfleet, we're attending this meeting, and Mr. Sanchez was now passed the seas, says to me, says to the media, there's a representative, Mr. Porro, interview him about this. They came up on me, they interviewed me, and because they interviewed me, and all I said was, it's a shame that the taxpayers are suing taxpayers here in City Socorro over the flooding issue. The muscle thing was instigated by Adlarge and the mayor, Jesus Reese at the time. They went so far as going down to Austin. They didn't know that I was in the back, but they were up in front in the training session that we had there with the lawyers up there, and they said, we want to tell you about this councilman that we have, what a pain in the ass he is, okay? And talking about me, and what the things that he does. So they came back and they designed this policy, right there, that came from right there. I have just more to say. There's more to say, I don't know if you want to hear it or not. You have to suspend the rule.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
To suspend the vote?
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Okay, let's go. So anyway, all this time, we were being muzzled, myself and the rest of council were being muzzled because they were, council was misled by these two individuals, okay? And yes, I agree that you have to have a PRI, you have to have the mayor doing all this, I agree with all that. But in his pocket, in his phone, you'll find all the phone numbers to the media. Everybody, anytime there's a story come out, back then, he would call and tell them, and he'd be on TV. Nope, disregard everybody else, okay? And I'm going to tell you right now, when that incident happened with me, where, I'll use the phrase that was used on TV one time. They tried to throw him the book, okay? Let's throw him the book. That was on TV, that came out on TV. It embarrassed me because it was horrible, one of our Socorro representatives was standing there in front of our public. They said, what, don't they know how to speak English down there? Nonetheless, nonetheless, I was set up by that meeting. I found out from them where the setup came from. This is one of the reasons I'm so angry still to this day, I'm very angry, because it was a setup. I was done the same way that they tried to do Ivan Villa Logos, okay? I was done the same way with all these witch hunts that have been going on, so. And it's just wrong. All I was trying to do, like District Four was doing, trying to represent my people in that area and speak for my people. But because somebody else wanted all the publicity, somebody wanted to be in front of the camera all the time, they came up with this policy, and it hurt us, because it kept the rest of us from being able to talk. Because, oh, we're going to throw him the book, okay? All right? Please understand, it's coming back to bite me. This is his policy that he's violating. I want to calm down, because I'm still, I'm getting angry all over here. I went through a whole lot, I went through a whole lot because of innuendos, false stuff, all kinds of stuff, that I finally had to say, you know what, enough is enough. I was a lone wolf out there, and I'd had enough.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And the truth shall set you free.
Yes.
The reason why, Mr. Perez, since you were here for that, and you were here for that. What I said earlier, that all of us here have done interviews and not opened our mouths and put our foot in our mouth, except that man. Because of that man cost us the city money.
Yeah, right.
Okay? You remember that.
Can you please refrain from personal attacks and just talk about the item?
Not personal attacks, I'm just saying. Because, you know what, that's why we did it. Because it cost the mu, the city money in a lawsuit. Now, I get it and I understand, but that's what I'm saying. We know better, not like some others.
The lawsuit that he is referring to?
No, 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 no.
The lawsuit that he is referring to?
His time's up.
Is a lawsuit with the residents of Patty Joe that the City of Socorro had to pay because of the decision that he and another individual made up there. The rest of us had to try to figure out how to, how to deal with it, how to tone it, how to control it.
That's true.
Okay?
And you know, Mr. Perez?
That's where it all started. All right.
Monsieur Logos?
I think we can all agree that there's just been so much wrong. We, I think we can all agree that tonight, we showed the city of Socorro the news that we can unite. I think today is a day that we let all those feelings go so that tomorrow, it's a better day and we can move forward. That's what I'm hoping. That's what I'm hoping, I really am. I don't know what tomorrow holds, I really don't. But can, can you say sorry to each other and, and move on?
No, too much damage, too much, too much damage.
Gotta let it go, it hurts you on the inside.
Miss Loganos?
And I am a religious man and I will forgive, but I won't do that.
You know what, it's funny how you said that. Because when I came in, when I came in, I did apologize to him.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did, and he walked away.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Wait, wait, you do it to me, but you don't do it to him.
I, I was about to...
No, you did not, no, you did not. Give me the common courtesy like you gave him.
I was about to say, Mr. Cox, your time is up, Mr. Rodriguez, you're...
Incidentally, I was cleared of all giving.
Mr. Cox?
That's true.
Mayor, I have three more speakers to sign up. Daniel Hernandez? Sergio Jaime? And Lorenzo Freire? Mr. Perez?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and amend a, amend, oh, rather, amend my, my motion to include, uh, that the policy, a draft policy be presented to council on the, uh, the April fifth meeting.
Second.
To have a, a draft, a, a policy.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Caesar, Caesar Navarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to review possible violation of policy number thirty-seven, amendment number six, section seven, travel cancellation. I brought this item to go ahead and review our travel cancellation policy. I do understand that sometimes, uh, there's emergencies, but just to clarify and for transparency purposes, make sure that we are enforcing our travel cancellation policy and if needed, have any input from council at this time.
Mayor, we have speakers. Daniel Hernandez? Sergio Jaime? Lorenzo Freire?
They all left.
Sergio Cox?
Once again, earlier today, we heard about having to go to these classes and go to, go to school in Austin and San Antonio, wherever they're offering these TML things, and, uh, uh, training and so forth. Go to training here and go to training there. Once again, I went to some, I went to, I attended a lot of those things, and I attended in the company of other people too, District Four, okay? And the problem there was, I did attend those classes, those conferences. Somebody else did not. And it's got in my windows, I'm sitting in Johnny, that individual, I'm sitting right here with him. All right, so, I ask you guys, yes, the schooling is good, the traveling is good. I highly recommend it because you can go down to TML and you can ask consequences about how to run a city, how to correct and learn these things. But if you don't attend the classes, you go, you're stealing from the city. If you sit in your motel room and not go to these classes. And we're talking about per diem, we're talking about air flight, we're talking about meals, we're talking about everything. And that's wrong. And I have witnesses, I have witnesses. I even got my picture in one of those tech TML magazines where I was, because I was there, I got my picture taken. I can prove it. But other individuals didn't, he wasn't there, he was in his motel room. So, you have to look at, look at it real close and find out who really is taking advantage of the city.
Mr. Duran?
Uh, according to the travel policy, um, paragraph seven, travel cancellations, it says that, uh, emergency cancellations are expected. However, each cancellation will be reviewed by finance and presented to council for consideration. I think that, uh, we do need to refer this to our finance, uh, Mr. Casciano, and have him presented to council at our next meeting. That's my motion.
I'm sorry, let's turn to...
To, um, I'll put my glasses on. To, um, use, um, paragraph seven, so, it says that emergency cancellations are expected. However, each cancellation will be reviewed by finance and presented to council for consideration. Uh, we did have a cancellation, I think that Mr. Casciano needs to review it and present it to council for consideration at our next meeting.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, if I may, may I?
Mr. Perez, go ahead.
Um, I think that the, it should be done on a case-by-case basis. Certainly, um, you can't make a habit of not going if you're, if you're, but if it's something that's truly, truly beyond your control, uh, I think that you can't fault an individual. I mean, that, that, that happens.
Yeah.
It happens. So, I think that, and we're all subject to that. I mean, I don't travel, but, you know, we all, we're all subject to that. So, I think that even coming to the meeting, or not being able to come to a meeting, I mean, something happens, something happens. So, I think that, uh, Mr. Casciano can, can look at the, at the circumstances and, and then make a recommendation. And then, but the thing is that I don't want, by the same token though, I don't want Mr. Casciano placed in a situation where he's having to make a call about the, the propriety or the impropriety of the, of the cancellation. I think that he just presents the facts and then we make the determination. Because we shouldn't put him in that situation.
Mr. Duran?
That's how it's, it's stated. It's that he's going to review it and present his findings to council for consideration. So, we're gonna make the ultimate decision based on his findings.
Monsieur Logos?
My question is, for, for every, um, if, if we know for a fact it was an emergency, we need to go through the steps every single time? We can't make a decision just now.
Well, it says that, yeah, excuse me.
Mr. Duran?
It says that emergency cancellations are expected. However, each cancellation will be reviewed. In other words, we have to review every cancellation, and I'm sure if there's an emergency, he's gonna come back and say, that was a bona fide emergency, and then that'll, he'll state that.
So, we're, we're doing this just to follow the rules?
Well, it's, it's written right here. It's our policy.
Mr. Perez?
And it also could be for severe weather because sometimes you can go to, because it happened to be many years ago. I went to, uh, Nashville, Tennessee, and it was for a conference, and it was snowing, and, I mean, we, thank God the plane was like, ah, but it was, there was so much snow that even the presenters didn't make it to the, to the conference. And so, at that point, I'm not sure if, if they reimbursed our finance department at that point, or their organization, but certainly there were things that, that are beyond our control. So, I think that those are things that we need to consider as well. So, again, it, it's just making sure that we're all subject to the same policy.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, it, it's funny how we want to be sticklers to the rules, you know? And I wish, for those of you who have your parents living, that you don't go through the crap I went through. And I hope that just because you're trying to set a point and you're trying to say, oh, you know, you, you know, you're trying to, like I said one more time, we're trying to divide this council instead of unify. You know, I've had a conversation with Mr. Duran. And I told him one time. I had a meeting with Ms. Villa Logos. And we, and the subject of that was, why would we argue? Cause he wanted a little chisme. And that's the truth. And I, my father got operated from the neck, okay? When I don't go to these meetings, okay? My mother too, my mother is not well, okay? And, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't think I have to, you know, be degrading and, 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 and doing that. If you want to take my word for it, take my word for it. If you don't, I don't care either way. Either way, I'm gonna say this, I hope your mom doesn't happen to somebody and you don't make it to a meeting. You were there, you were there, city manager was there, and our engineer was there. I came here to a meeting because of tech stuff. Twenty minutes before I got here, I busted my hand. And you saw it, and you saw it too. I had to go to the doctor, I didn't go until after. Because to me, if I'm able to make it, I'm going to be there no matter what. I could not make it. You've been here for, like I said, you've been the longest, with the exception of myself. I have never missed a training, never. Emergencies happen, we're planning ahead of time. My father got operated once and my mom sent me home. It, it, I think it's just a regular procedure, that's why I didn't make it. But I was gonna leave, but I, I went to that meeting with Ms. Villa Logos. I busted my hand and I still made it that day. You want to sit here and ridicule me because I'm taking the position of going to my, my father's operation? Let me tell you something. If there's another meeting and I happen to be in the same predicament, you bet your darned cookies that I'm gonna go with my relatives because I don't wish that upon none of you. And you want to re, like I said, you want to berate us? I don't think so. I will say this, we cannot tell what tomorrow holds. We don't know if we get hit by a car. Stuff happens. This should have been handled, not this way, to be, you know, like Ms. Villa Logos, berating us. You know what, hey, I'm sorry, yes, I didn't make it, but you know what? And I'll say it again, if I have ten meetings to attend and all of them I have to be by my mom's or my dad's side, you bet your cookies I'm gonna be there. Now, it's not my intention, and it wasn't my intention, because you know, Mr. Perez, that I've never, ever failed to go to a training.
Mr. Perez?
I think that, and I understand because, I mean, I've, my mom passed away less than two years ago, so you, so I understand exactly what you're saying. And so, in terms of, I guess, due diligence, because we do have, let's face it, we do, that we do have a responsibility also to make sure that we're upfront and transparent, and we've talked about this, you know, a lot this year. And I think that it's not, I, I think it's reasonable for, and I'm only just gonna speak for myself. It's only reasonable for the staff to expect me to contact them and let them know, you know what? My dad is in the hospital, whatever the case may be, and say, you know what, I won't be able to make it to that conference because of this. And you're right, I think that we're, and I think we're at a point now where we're, we've always been professional enough. Because I, I, I can, and I, I mentioned this to, uh, Mr. Navarez, that I can only control my actions. And so, my thing would be, and I've called, even, I haven't traveled, but I've, I've called staff and told them, I can't make it for whatever, I mean, if it's work related and, and whatever the case may be. But I think that we owe that courtesy to the staff. Um, and either a, an email or a text if, if they've received, if you've got their phone number. I think that that, I think that would suffice because at, I, I'm, I'm not gonna go out, at least, you know, that were my, my situation. I'm not gonna say, well, prove that you, you were at the hospital, no, because I'm gonna take it at face value that, that, you know, you're not, you're not out there, you know, bar hopping when you should be somewhere else, you know? And use your parents as an excuse. I, I know you're not doing that. And so, I think that we need to be, we need to afford each other that, that courtesy and that professional trust because it's a professional trust that you're not going, that you're saying, okay, I can't go, and I, I let the mayor know and whomever, and, 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 and that to me would be suffice. And I think that that would be meeting the policy.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And this is a question for our city manager. When I missed the meeting on the NPO, I did not call you and I did not text you. I went to your office, showed you a picture, and I left that moment. Didn't I do that? Okay? I am not gonna send a picture of my father cut up or my mother. At that moment, all I care about is getting my crap ready and going out the door. I hope, one more time, you guys don't go through the crap I'm going through. My father and my mother, and I'm talking about my stepfather, who I love to death. He's the one that raised me, okay? And I will say this, I hope you guys don't ever go through what I'm going through. They're not elderly by any chance. They're sixty years old, but unfortunately, father time hasn't been good to them. And I will say this, I went to the office and Ms. Rodarte was in meetings. And I was gonna do the exact same thing, I'm gone, I can't make it. And I didn't have time, I'm sorry, I, my mind is somewhere else. And I will say it again, Mr. Perez. Four years I've been here, I've never missed one. And by golly, I'm telling you now, if I didn't miss, if I missed a meeting for whatever reason, I have a damn good reason for it.
And you're absolutely right, and, and I don't want this to be just a conversation between me, but I think that the, at the minimum, it's just, you're right, I, I wouldn't send the picture, I would, no. All I would say is, I have an emergency, it's a family emergency, and that's enough. Believe me, because I, I have had employees under my watch. I've had over sixty-five some employees that have been responsible. And so, I, they come to me and they were coming and they would say, Mr. Perez, I've got a family emergency. I didn't ask, we'll find coverage for you, take care of it. And so, that, that's all, all I do is, I would ask that as a professional person, just let me know, and, and everything else would be taken, and that's...
And I did. It's just that she was busy and I needed to leave.
Mr. Duran?
I think all this is, like you said, we, the three of us, four of us, we were waiting there at the airport. No, anybody, did you hear from them? No, nobody's heard from them. Um, and I think we were just wondering if there was something happened to you. Okay, the, we get to San Antonio and we had to change the reservation. Mr. Navarez ended up driving, and we still didn't know what was going on. And I think what, where this all came from is, there was a, a news item that you were in, and we were wondering what happened, why that news item came up. I think all of us were wondering that, is, you know, where's the, uh, why you were not there to attend the meeting, but you were there to give the, the news, uh, an interview?
Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah, so, all, all it takes is a simple phone call to any of us, to staff.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is...
I understand, believe me, we've all been there. Well, not all of us, but, uh, I've been there.
I didn't know about, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm still, I'm just not hearing about the, the news thing. I just, just so you know, I didn't know.
We've all been through it, I mean, you, you don't have the Southwest patent on pain. Believe me, I went through it with both my parents. And probably a lot more than you are going through. So, but to, to, don't, don't, don't come in here and if you have that problem, let somebody know. We're all here, like you say, that's how you spread us apart, by keeping us out. You don't think that, that, that we care what's going on with your parents? You know, you talk about unity, but you're the one that's kicking us out of there. You don't think that we're compassionate? That we don't care about your parents either? I have parents, I had my parents, they're gone. I don't have that luxury anymore, you do. But let us in on it too. But let us in on it too.
You know, nobody wants to... You know, some, some of you deal with it in a different way, you know? I'm just saying that I, I'm, you know, I don't know how much time I got on my books. You know, I don't. You know? It, it, it just, just scares me.
Okay, so then I guess, I think that we're... I am, I apologize. I think that at this point, then, um, I think that we pretty much have come to some sort of consensus as to how we should, how we should move forward from this point on. Again, this is a lesson learned, and, and that's all we need to say. Just a simple courtesy, I can't go, I can't go, it's just a personal emergency. Don't have to, don't have to give specifics, because, I mean, we're all adults, and, and so that's all we need to know. And, and there is two sides to see it, because what if you had been in an accident? I mean, not knowing what had happened to your, to your parents, what if you had been in an accident? Then, then there's some of the things that need, other, other steps that need to be followed as well. You know, that, that's the one thing that, that we need to account for. And it's not that, I, I would, I don't want to be intrusive into your personal business, but if, if you're, if I'm, if you're traveling with me and you're not there, you know, you're...
I, I apologize.
You know what I'm saying?
I just, I just not accustomed to sending an email. I, I'm not, I just go in there and I say, hey, look...
Or even, or even, and I think, I, I know what you're...
You know, and, and, and you know what, I'll, I'll, I'll do that, you know, next time. I just, I just got so emotional when they told me that, that he had to go back under the knife, that he didn't come out right, and, you know. It, it's like, I don't want my dad to be perplexed, dude, you know?
Mr. Rodriguez, you, believe Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, I went, I, I, I went, I saw him that he was okay, talked to the doctors, doctor said, hey, you know what, everything went peachy, every, don't worry about it, talked to my mom. My mom said, you know what, just go back, we're good, and that's it. So, you know, it, it's just one of those things that I say, I just don't want none of you guys to go through what I'm going through. I, I should have just sent an email, I usually, because I'm out the door. And that's the, the last, the first, the last stop I do is here, show I'm going. Next time I'll just send an email.
Look, this is, this is the way we've always operated, and I, and I, and I said it to the staff that I worked with when I supervised them. It's God, whatever that means to you, family and work, in that order. If you're not right on the first two, I don't need you there because you're not focused. And so I think that that's, I, then that's what I've operated under. It's just understanding that there are other, there, you have a, and it's not a family, you have professional, you have colleagues that are looking out for you and are, do get worried about you, and so it's just a matter of just informing them. Whether it's them directly or somebody from the staff that can later pass on the word, but just so that, that, that there's not that worry, because we do worry for each other. As much as we can get at each other's throats sometimes, we do worry because we're, we're unit, and so we need to behave that way. And so that's all I'm gonna say.
Mayor, we have one more speaker that we have to announce, Sonia Teran. Those were all our speakers.
So then, can, do we need to, I'd like to make a motion to delete this item?
Second?
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Hi.
Tizer Navárez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes. Item number twenty-two, discussion and action. The city of Socorro needs to reassess and make changes to the three-eighty economic development plan. This will help support and maintain a strong, vibrant local economy for years to come. Requesting a private company and/or specialists in this field who can help discover, plan, and organize ways to stimulate economic growth in the city. Recent attempts have not produced significant economic development.
Chicos tacos?
Mayor, we have speakers that I have to announce.
Do we have motion first?
Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Dalian Hernández? Sergio Jaime? Lorenzo Friday? Those were all our speakers.
Oh my gosh.
Mr. Duran? Mr. Duran?
Okay, under, um, section twelve point zero four of our...
Excuse me, without due respect, I think we need to let the person that put the item speak first.
Mm-hmm.
That's Robert's rules. Yes?
Yes.
Am I good?
Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
The, the reason why I brought up this item is because this is what I've been working for the past year and a half. The reason why we di, I didn't bring it up any sooner because we needed to do a lot of stuff before we get to this point. One of the things is, is that we did implement the three-eighty plan, because when we leave North Fleet was the city manager, and, uh... Before Mr. Ochoa, uh, was here, um...
Mr. Leoni?
Mr. Leoni was here. Uh, we went with Joe, I think, Joe Terrazas. Um, we went because there was a company that came in, I'm gonna give you a little backstory on the, of the three-eighty plan and why we implemented it, but we need to go further than this. Um, there was a company that came to El Paso that wanted to pay fifteen dollars an hour. And it was like two dollars and some cents over the twelve seventy-five or something like that. And El Paso didn't want it because they wanted them to pay seventeen dollars. So, we contacted this company, and then they said, hey, we'll meet you, but we're going to the airport. We met him at the Village Inn, um, we, we gave him, you know, our spiel that, you know what, hey, we're, you, we're a community in dire need of companies to come in and invest in our, in our, in our community, and at the same token, you know, provide some, some good quality jobs for our residents. Um, we found out that they were looking for incentives that which we did not offer. So what we did after that conversation, they said, yeah, we're, we're looking for it, but we never had anything in place. Therefore, the three-eighty plan, we just eliminated it and put it in ours. But nevertheless, that's El Paso's three-eighty plan. We never tweaked it, and that's what we need to do, because our needs are different than El Paso's needs. Our needs are different than Horizon's needs. The difference why Horizon has a boom, booming industry right now, it's because not only do they have the three-eighty plan, but they also have a department on, on the, uh... Well, they have this department, right? What we're trying to do is we're trying to...
Economic development?
The what? Yeah, economic development plan, okay? And that's what they do. They offer incentives, they do a, a, if you notice in the backup, like, Mr. Ralph wanted to put the same thing about a, a, what was that, Mr. Ralph?
Incentive plan.
No, 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 the, the...
Go Texas.
Yeah, but it's, you put it, it was different, different thing on the agenda. Anyways, on our, on our, on our charter, it says about, uh, the zoning. So, you know, what we're, what we need to do is that we need to set a plan before. We, as council, need to dictate and say, this is what we're looking to entice. This is the areas we need to do, so that we can implement it, but we, we don't have the expertise, that's what I'm trying to tell you. You can look at the backup, that I had a theater, and I had, uh, the, there was many more that I could not find on emails because I had to go, because I've been trying to work for this for the past three and a half years. I have countless emails that I have to go back, I mean, it's like, I went back to get these more than, you know, three thousand emails. So what I'm trying to say is that even though we do want to entice these companies, we don't have, and we can't facilitate it because we don't have anything in place. We need to get a, somebody that's qualified, whether it be an individual or a company, to come and look at what we have as a city. Give them our input, they will draft something that can entice companies to come in and invest in our communities. Horizon did it, that's how they got it done. They went, outsourced it. The company came in, looked at all of their, their, their available lands, all of the areas, they said, okay, what is it that you're looking for? What is it that you want us to help you with? They decide and, 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 and do the body of work in which they can go and entice these companies to go. I will say this, these companies that I've asked for looked at our household income, and it's not where it's supposed to be. It's, I'm not gonna say who, but it's sad to say that someone in our vicinity tells us that we're so poor that they won't make in a single dime.
A demographic, a specific demographic.
Yes. And one of the things that we did to help boost is to get rid of our R threes and get better quality of homes, which will entice our, our residents who go out and get these degrees and better jobs to stay in Socorro. But we need to entice them because we don't have a lot of the amenities that Horizon is giving them. So we need to be competitive, and that's what I'm saying, is that we need to get somebody to help us, because we are overwhelming our staff, we don't have somebody in our staff that is well-versed and is dedicated on that subject. We need some professional to help us out and to get this accomplished. And I think that, you know, the backup says it, it's short and simple, conversations in the form are a lot harsher. A, the money's not there, you guys aren't poor, uh, you know, stuff like that. We have the population, but other than that, we don't have a demographic that they're looking for. But this way, we can set the parameters in which we want to give and incentivize. And I'm not saying we're gonna incentivize a hundred percent, because I never liked that, and I've said it openly, and I will continue to say it. I will not give a hundred percent incentives, but we can give some incentives. We just don't know what, because we need somebody with that kind of specialty to come and tell us, what do you want to do? What do you want to attract? We'll make it done, we'll make it happen, and then you guys will be ready to start doing this. It's very crucial for us, because we, we have more land than Horizon, and how is it that they have? And they have half of the residencies, of residents that we have. There are a little over fifteen thousand, we're over thirty-two thousand, and yet they have not, six million and a half dollars more in their budget because of all the things that they're getting, because they have those plans. We need it, desperately need it, and we need to get it done.
Mr. Duran?
We have, and the charter has language for an enterprise zone. We tried to, uh, look at the Go Texas, but because El Paso is not a disadvantaged county, we didn't qualify for that. So I think, and I think you're still working on an incentive plan, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Ochoa can give you kind of just like a brief...
Give us the brief.
Some brief information.
I have jury selection tomorrow.
You have what? You have what?
I have jury selection tomorrow, so...
Oh, man.
I'll make this quick. After, after we're looking at, uh, the incentive, uh, program, I, I shared that information that, uh, unfortunately, we would not qualify because El Paso's not a need, if you will. Um, we didn't, I did dig up policy three-eighty, and I've been actually working on that already, actually amending that, uh, myself and with some help of, of, uh, former colleagues who were economic development, uh, people. Um, so I, I do have a draft, actually, you already forwarded to my city manager for her to review. I have a draft for a policy, I have an application that I also kind of mimicked, uh, El Paso's kind of sort of, and we also have a map for areas that we're looking at possibly wanting, uh, this incentive policies, uh, to take place. Um, so I do have a draft so far, and that's something we could, I could definitely present to you all at the next meeting, if you like.
Actually, before we present it to you all, uh, we want to send it to the El Paso County Economic Development, because they said they would help us just so they can add a little bit more meat to it before we send it to the attorney, and then we can present to all, to you all, for adoption.
Mr. Perez?
I wanted to add that, um, I had a conversation with, uh, the owners of La Cueva, the owner of La Cueva Theater, René Socorro. And we had precisely that type of conversation, that the individuals that are restoring the, the old buildings along the historic, historic district, they have, they're not recouping any kind of, of profit because they're not, they don't have, there's, there are no incentives for them. And so, there's no incentive to re-refurbish or restore some of these buildings, because there's nothing that can come back, and I can understand that. You know, that, that, that they wanna, we want a historic district, especially in my area, I mean, we, I have a historic, a historic district. And, you know, I can't, well, you know, we, or I as part of this council, can't offer them anything to be able to bring that. And I know that talks have been, have been going on about having a winery, having a walking trail, I mean, all the stuff that you would like to see in that area, but if, if there's, as a businessman, if I'm, if, if I'm investing all this money and I don't have some kind of incentive, you know, then it's not worth my while.
And some owners, oh, sorry.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And some owners don't even want fifty percent or a hundred percent. Some owners just want, you know, ten percent, five percent, twenty percent, you know, and those were, and, and, and think of all the, just the historical, uh, district. Think of all the things we could do there. There's a lot of people that love old homes, that would refurbish them, make business into... There's, there's vacant land, I mean, come on, man, we're forty-nine percent of agricultural land. That's gonna turn into, you know, homes and commercial buildings and stuff like that. We need to look at that. But like I say, you know, if, if we decide to go with Mr. Ochoa's plan and stuff, or we want somebody to help him as well, we could do that too, and, 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 and minimize the cost. All I'm saying is that we do need to look at it and really start doing this, because we're starting at the back, and we have to compete with Horizon.
Mr. Rodriguez, I really appreciate you putting this item on the agenda. I think we all agree that we're growing, and we need to take advantage of that point right now. However, I do think that you're a little ahead of yourself, because we do have the incentive policy that's being worked on. I think we should wait to review that draft, so that if we do decide to hire a company or specialist to come in, we give them the proper tools that they can work with. Additionally, I think we do need, uh, market analysis from HR to see if it would be beneficial to have a private company, a one person, a department, et cetera, so we can continue forward with this...
That's, that's fine.
Progressive vision. Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, that's fine. I did not know that Mr. Ochoa was working on it. If I would have known that Mr. Ochoa was working on it, I wouldn't have brought it up. One of the things is that I, we just need to already start doing something. You know, if Mr. Ochoa's capable enough, then so be it. You know, I'm not in any way, shape, or form, you know, discrediting any of our, of our employees. All I'm saying is we need somebody with specialties. Now, we can look at what he has, also, we need to put our input as well, because we all have districts to look for. We all want something in our district, so it's something that, uh, before anything is presented to anybody, we should be presenting it, and, and...
Absolutely.
And everybody in their district should have an input on what areas would they like. And, like, for example, Mr. Perez brought up a good point. He's got the historical district. Hey, he can do that. Ms. Villalobos has a lot of vacant land. She might want, you know, manufacturing, you know, District One. District One also has vacant properties. I mean, we, we could put, you know, entertainment district. District Two, you know, has cows and stuff, and you can put farm and beehives and stuff. You know, all I'm saying is, we should, you should have an input on what you would like to incentivize in your district. And, and I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy with it.
Medicinal honey.
We approved it at the February fifteenth meeting, to go ahead and work on the incentives project, and I think it is gonna come in front of council for all of us to review, correct?
Correct, and I just wanted to add that, as we need your input, I think it's important to have a community meeting for those property owners to kind of get their feedback of what it is that they're looking for, so we can take that into consideration when we're drafting this. And then we can hold a community meeting with all.
Mr. Duran?
Raise your hand, Mr. Duran. Oh, you have?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I have a lot of faith in Mr. Ochoa, Ms. Rodarte, she's already reached out to the county. Everybody wants to help. I think, like, like, uh, Mayor said, we are a little bit ahead of ourselves. I don't think we need to hire anybody just yet. We're not there yet. We're not Horizon City. We don't have the budget they have. And also, we need to define what we want in our city from everybody, everybody's input, and from the community. Once we get this plan together, we can have some community meetings, so that the community can tell us, here's what we want. Well, I'm reiterating the point, okay? So, that's just, you know, I think, um, we've already, I don't even think we need to do anything on this motion, because we're already doing it. we've already, I don't even think we need to do anything on this motion because we're already doing it.
That's fine, you can delete it.
Motion to delete.
Second.
We have to.
No, we had a motion.
You have to resent.
Who had the motion?
I'll go ahead and resent the motion.
And then delete it, Mr. Perez.
And make the motion to delete the item.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes. Item number twenty-four, discussion and action to allow at-large representative René Rodríguez and District Four Representative Ivan Colombia-Lobos to attend an exclusive workshop meeting with the mayor and council of Terrell, Texas on April eighth and ninth, two thousand eighteen, to discuss economic development.
Okay, so you're really going to love mine. Let me tell you. Um, I, I, I think, th- this one's good, I, I think.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve for discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, so, um, Terrell, Texas, um, is a city in Kaufman County, population of seventeen thousand plus. Terrell is located thirty-two miles east of Dallas. Recently, several of us council members attended training in San Antonio, Texas hosted by TML. At this training, I had the good fortune of meeting District Two Councilmember Grady Simpson from the city of Terrell, Texas, who shared with me along with Councilmember René Rodríguez, their past city struggles and adversities regarding economical development, which mimic in many ways our own, our, our current economic development struggle issues. The city of Terrell, Texas worked diligently and mastered a powerful business plan, ultimately partnering up with giant corporations. And now Terrell, Texas is a fastest-growing city in Dallas-Fort Worth metropolitan area. At this two-day workshop, we hope to gain knowledge, how to begin, maintain and grow a long-term, sound economic strategy along with referral contact information with their business partners. I think I said it all. How this came about, you know, how they put us in groups and we started talking and, of course, I always go first and I tell them about, we were talking, uh, the subject was economic development and we were talking about, I was talking about our struggles and how we have a lot of mom and pops, a lot of trucking companies. And he, he literally just told me, so did we. So did we, you know? And they put, if you look at their website, it is phenomenal. It, it is really good for attracting businesses, number one. Number two, they put this strati-, they're very smart. We had, I had a, we had a conversation with them, they're extremely bright. And they're excited that they want to share this information with us. They're not charging us anything. Anybody can come, I, the fact that I brought, you were, I think you were there and I said, Mr., uh, Rodríguez, come over here, you got to hear this. I was excited, I'm excited. I mean, they're excited to welcome us and show us how they started and how they partnered up. I just want to, at the time, I said, well, just give me where your partners are, they won't release them. Because they want to make sure that we know what they are expecting from.
Us.
Us. They don't want to just refer anybody. And they're very excited about teaching us how they did it. I mean, they only have seventeen thousand and they're, they're just booming. I mean, what did you say their revenue was or? Yes, you want to hear this. It was humongous, humongous.
Population was?
Seventeen thousand.
Sorry, Mayor, Mayor, may I?
Mr. Rodriguez?
How many?
Seventeen thousand.
And you know how much their budget is? Just take a guess. Forty-seven million dollars. On top of that, they have four thousand acres, okay? That's a lot of acres, a lot of land. That they did it on the economic, economic, oh my God, I'm going to.
Economic development.
Uh, yes. They started on the first three hundred. And look at their budget. And they're still building and they're building and that's what they're wanting to show us is how, how they started. I had a conversation with Mr. Duran where he said, I'm going to bring that, but I knew it wouldn't because we don't qualify. I didn't tell him we didn't qualify because as soon as I told him, oh, we're doing it wrong because, because I already knew. But he said, oh, well, just let me bring it, so, fine. But they're the ones that said, hey, we had to go through a lot of stuff, have a lot of implementation in order to do what we did. What we want to do is that, is this something that we might be looking into? Because remember, we have forty-eight percent agricultural land that is going to be converted eventually. I mean, there's a lot of potential for the city of Socorro, a lot. What better than to go and learn from people who did it? They also advised us that, look, you have to set the groundwork because this took about three to five years from implementation, from, from con-, uh, from conception to implementation. So this is something that we have to set forth so that we can be better adjusted in our area. I think, I think, you know, uh, they will show us how they did it, you know, what loopholes they went through, you know, all of the bells and whistles. And they're very excited and I, and, and Ms. Villalobos, you know, thank God she sat right next to him. And, and it, it's just like, it was just God sent, um, any of us.
You know, they're so excited, they've never taught any, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
They're so excited, they've, they've never had anybody interested, but they already have a plan for us. It's already, as a matter of fact, I got a phone call this week and I'm like, they haven't approved it yet, wait, you know, I'll let you know first thing Friday morning. But he says, we're ready for you. The council is ready for you. Uh, the dates are again, um, April eighth and ninth. We have, we probably have to travel before because.
On a Sunday.
Right, because they want us there first thing in the morning on the April eighth. They have a, I mean, they're, they told us, come ready to learn because we're just going to go fast, we're going to show you, you know, and then, um, hopefully little by little they'll start sharing their partners. But not only that, they're going to talk to their partners about our city. Which is, which is, I think, something that, you know, we've been wanting here, you know, somebody can show us the ropes for free and, and give us their, their, um, their references and give us a good reference, hopefully, you know, then we can start using what we were just talking about in the last item.
Ms. Villalobos, this is a, uh, exclusive workshop, so that means they're putting together the training for you two?
No, exclusive to the city of Socorro.
I, I was just wondering because it costs the same to take two people over there and then to bring two people over here and that way they can bring the workshop to all of us and include our staff.
That would be a great idea, but I, we didn't talk about that.
Yeah.
But, but they do want to show you their sites.
I understand, but I mean, it's just something to consider, they can take pictures, bring it to us, you know, it's not the same, but I was just wondering if.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that and most of those people do have jobs, so I don't know if that's.
Mr. Perez?
I think that, um, there's a saying that says, in order to make manufacturing better. And so I think that it is, I think it would be well-served if, if they went. But on the flip side, to your point, I, I bring, asking them to come and, and back over and set up a, a, a workshop for us. Uh, once that they've, once that they've, uh, established that, you all have established that network or strengthen that network, bring them here and then we can take advantage of that. Because I think that, that they, we need to show a good faith effort to learn. And so by going over there, you all will, will do that. And then they'll feel confident of, to bring back, to come back to us and then we start formulating what we need because it, even though they're, they're smaller, I'm sure their needs are somewhat different than ours. And so we can start customizing their plan or what they've done to us.
And they have.
Mr. Duran?
I was, um, you know, I think, once again, we're premature. We don't have an incentive pa-, plan, so what are we going to have to offer their partners? We don't have nothing to offer them yet. We need to build that incentive plan first. Then we need, because there, you're talking about seventeen thousand people with forty-seven million dollars worth of income, tax base or, or, we don't have that. So you can't compare the two. You cannot compare the two, they're, I'm, let me just finish my, my, before I lose it. You can't compare the two. Number one, is, is this a TML-sponsored workshop? If it's not, I mean, then it's, because I mean, I met people in Washington DC. There was a, um, a mayor from Indiana and he transformed his downtown. I mean, I don't think we, we should be going to Indiana to go look at that. I think we need to get our house in order first. We need to have an incentive plan that is, you know, that, that the city needs and wants. What if we don't want what Terrell, Texas has? We have to get with our constituents. We need to find out what they want. I think this is premature also. We need to also, uh, look at, do we have any funds for this? I believe our, our training budget is in the negative. So we don't have money to send anybody anywhere. We've used it all up for the year. So we don't, you know, let's get our incentive program up and running to where we can offer somebody something. We're going to go over there and, and do what? Look at what they have and we have nothing to implement it with. We can't, you know, we cannot, uh, offer them any, anything. We have land, yeah, we have land, but what are we going to give you? We don't know because we don't have our incentive plan. We need to get that first, I think.
Mr. Perez?
I, I see where you're coming from, but I don't necessarily agree with it completely. And this is reasonable. Because sometimes in order to go, I would like, I would, I would support them going because if they have, i- if this, if this municipality has gone through some of the same struggles that we have, then why are we going to reinvent the wheel, for one? Two, um, in terms of meeting with their partners, I think that's, that is worth consideration and, and actually doing, uh, meeting them because then it allows us to, um, start establishing the standards and incentives by which they are dealing with. Because if we, if we want to be competitive, then we need to be competitive not only with the city of El Paso or the city of Horizon or the city of Clanton, Clanton. But I want to be competitive to, with the people on, on the east, east, in east Texas. Because, you know, if I can bring them over, we can bring them over, and why not? I think that having the development, the incentive plan is not mutually exclusive to starting with, uh, you know, uh, dipping our, our, our toes in the proverbial water and seeing what we can glean. I think that, eh, if we work it from both ends, I think that we'll be all the better for it. And so I would, I would, to me, I would have my support in terms of goal.
Ms. Villalobos?
So, thank you, Mr. Perez. Um, tha-, this is what I, this is what I, this is exactly what they said, right? Why do you want to reinvent the wheel?
Yes, he did.
So that's exactly what he said. And this is why the statement is to gain knowledge, how to begin, how to begin, maintain and grow. That's exactly what they're going to, they're, they're not getting anything out of this. They're not charging us anything. I, I understand about the flight and, and all that and I'm willing to drive or, uh, you know. I, whatever is cheaper, you know, take the train or bus. But I, you know, I, 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 I think that if we right now say no to them, we might not get this opportunity again.
Mayor.
We need to, this is not going to be something that's going to, in two days, we're going to learn. It's something that we're, we're going to build, they're, we're building trust with them, number one. I, you know, number two, um, I don't think we're going to get them to refer their partners immediately. It's not going to happen overnight, but we, we need to, they, we need to gain their trust. That's exactly what they said. They're not just going to, you know, give it to just anybody, so.
Mr. Rodriguez?
When, when we had the, uh, the conference call with them, I mean, uh, they were ready to go. They said, hey, they were, they thought that we were ready to go the following Monday. That's how excited they were. They, and they specifically told us, look, why are you going to reinvent the wheel? We're going to show you. We're excited that another per, that another entity wants to look at us and, and, and we'll give you, and he told us straight up, we'll, we'll basically giving you the keys for our success. We just want to make sure that you guys really want to move forward on it. That's why they want us to go. Because it says, we're, we're going to show you, we're going to take you step by step on how we got to where we're at. We're going to show you what you need to put, what to implement. He goes, not all of it, because they're very, this is the, the difference. They have different industries. They have entertainment and they have industrial and then they have, uh, the commercial. So they have different types. He goes, we have it all. You come and look at it, we'll tell you how we did it, this is how we got it done. And that's what they're trying to show us. They have also said that they will talk to their partners so that they can come to the meeting and they can be there. They won't give it to us right then and there because they want us to set, you know, a good faith and go. Now, we can ask if they want to come. But if they don't, we would need to make a decision to go or and come here. I think that should be the, the.
You know what, it's the first meeting, I don't think they should be coming.
Okay, yeah, okay. But, but nevertheless, they're going to help us and they're going to show us how they started. That's something that we can bring back with Mr. Ochoa or with our managers and stuff like that. And it'll, it'll smoothen out the transition. I thi-, I think that that institute knowledge will be good for the city of Socorro. And that's something that the opportunity is given. For some strange reason, she sat next to him and that's something that we all agree on to move the city forward. And that's the bottom line. This is an opportunity that we might not present itself again?
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm so tired, I can't even think. Oh, we can have it recorded. We can definitely have it recorded, you know, and, 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 and bring it back. I mean, why not? You know, if you guys want to sit down and, and listen to it or, or go, I'm, I'm just excited that, that, um, something that's near and dear to my heart, something that I want to bring to the city. And I, I'm getting the opportunity to, to, somebody show me the ropes for free, you know. They've already done their hard work, they've already done everything. We just have to learn it.
Mr. Duran?
What would be the, um, chances of a, a conference call?
Let me tell.
We'd still be there, we would, that way, um, because we don't have any travel funds. We're at zero, we're in fact in the negative. That way, uh, we could all, Mr. Ochoa could be here, all of staff could be here and they can ask questions. Whereas if they're not able to ask any questions, it's going to be on whatever questions you all ask.
Mr. Cristiano?
I'm sorry. Let me, let me just, let me just say, I know we don't have funds, but let's not pass up this opportunity. Let me, let me tell you why, because day one is going to be with them, showing us a stri-, day two is going to, they're going to show us how they did it, i- in their city. So that's exactly what they told me. So I, I don't know what to tell you, I really.
Mr. Perez?
Well, I, again, I support that they go. And there's nothing wrong with them asking at the time of the meeting, can we include some of our staff in a conference call? While they're there, I mean, because at this point, they're, they're, they're emissaries for the city. And I have no problem that, that they can represent our city well for us. And so, eh, when they're there, why not ask? Can we include Mr. Ochoa, our city manager, as, eh, eh, as part of this conversation? And then that way, they've seen that we're, that we've taken that first step, that we're, we're interested. And I understand that we, perhaps we don't have the, the fund yet. But, you know, if, we can just require the iron's hot. And so let's just go with it.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Duran, I didn't understand the question, just so.
The question is, when you're, when you're there, I mean, I'm sure, um, he can set up something so that your meetings with them will be right up there.
Yes, sir.
And we can all participate.
Absolutely.
We can all ask questions. I mean, our IT guy is good, I'm sure he can set that up.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question, yes.
And that way, all of us can be a, a part of it.
Mr. Dante?
That we're getting ready to do a budget amendment so we can definitely move money around and put some in the budget.
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes. Do we have anything for twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine? Motion to delete?
Motion made to delete items twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Any speakers? No, aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.